Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call, please?
Alderman Spencer, Alderman Benner, Alderman Taylor, Alderman Collier, Alderman Keahan, Alderman Zalinski. Aldermen's Nickle and Carl Kramer have been excused.
The first item on the agenda this evening is public comment on any matter of concern to the city. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this time, you could step up to the microphone and state your name and address. We'd love to hear from you. Seeing no one, we'll move on to the report of department head, staff, and consultants. The first item on the agenda is presentation of Resolution 5416. It's a resolution recognizing the achievements of Eric Hinsky. And first, we would need a motion to approve that. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-54-2016, recognize the achievements of Eric Hinsky.
It's a motion of second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. We do have Eric's family here this evening, Mark and Connie, his parents, and his grandmother, as well as his brother. I'd like to read the resolution and then present the street sign to them. Introduced by Alderman Keahan, Alderman Carl Kramer, and myself, whereas Manassas has a great history of great baseball players, and whereas the Hinsky family has been involved in Manassas baseball for generations, and whereas Eric Hinsky's began his baseball legacy at Manassas High, playing in the 1995 State Tournament, whereas Eric Hinsky was named 2002 Rookie of the Year for the American League by the Baseball Writers Association of America, and whereas Eric Hinsky played for major league baseball teams, including the Toronto Blue Jays, Boston Red Sox, Tampa Bay Rays, Pittsburgh Pirates, New York Yankees, Atlanta Braves, and Arizona Diamondbacks, and whereas Eric Hinsky currently coaches for the Chicago Cubs as their assistant hitting coach, and whereas Eric Hinsky has been a member of three World Series-winning teams, winning rings with the Boston Red Sox in 2007, the New York Yankees in 2009, and the Chicago Cubs in 2016, and whereas the Manassas community takes great pride in the achievements of Eric Hinsky and all of our athletes, their accomplishments, and dedication to the City of Manassas. Now therefore, it be resolved that the City of Manassas recognizes the achievements of Eric Hinsky and also the Hinsky family, who has all been very involved in sports throughout their time here in Manassas, by designating Hinsky Way as the honorary name of Geneva Road. And I'd just like to comment that we're very proud of all of our ambassadors throughout the country, and Eric has been a great ambassador for us. We're so happy that his family could be here tonight, and we're so happy to present this honorary street sign to him. Alderman Taylor, did you want to say something as well?
You know, a lifelong Cubs fan, my father was from Chicago and attended the Wrigley Field many years in the '30s, '40s, and he was in the Navy in 1945 when the last World Series was there, so he missed it. And I just wanted to say, when Eric joined the team, I said it would take him, an Asha boy, to break that 100-year Billy Goat curse, and it did happen. So congratulations to you and your son.
So if we could invite the family up here? Sure.
Thank you very much.
So I don't know if you guys would like to... Would you guys like to hold the big sign? Yeah? I need you one on each end, though, okay?
What does that say?
There we go. So we'd just like to give Mr. and Mrs. Hinsky a brief moment to talk a little bit about their son and his achievements over the years, and I'd like to thank you again for bringing such a great person to the community.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and all of the Aldermen and the council. This is such an honor. You know, little did we know, when Eric was in high school, that he'd ever go this far and play with so many teams, and 12 years in the major leagues, and still loving it. It's an honor to him. I talked to him today, I spoke to him, told him this was all happening, and he said, "Please be sure, take pictures, send me a link," so he can see it, and he would've been here. The season lasted into November. He's been home two weeks. I think he did a few games of golf, and already he's working in Arizona with hitting. Some of the players, I guess, are starting to hit already. I was hoping maybe he'd be home for Christmas, and that didn't look too good, because he's got three kids, and they all live in Arizona, and other grandmas live there, so... But that's all right. I see him in Chicago, and we all go down and visit, and thank you very much for this honor and this sign. He wanted me to be sure to thank you all. And I think it's appropriate that you named it Hinsky Way, because... Well, I'll keep it short, but our grandpa, he started Little League in Manassas. He really did. He and Dougie Witruski, and I won't know the other men's names, but so many of the guys that are Mark's age played for grandpa. He coached many, many, many years.
And he taught all those kids how to bunt properly.
Yes, yes. And that's a point. Eric will hit it to right field, and I love it when he lays down a bunt down the third baseline, because they put the shift on, and he knows just where to put it. Anyway, Mark played ball for, gosh, in the '60s, '70s, '80s, '90s. He played till he was 44. And he plays for Manassas Max. And my son Ryan has played, how many years with you, Ryan? You play and coach, and you play now?
He's retired. He's got two years to go, yeah.
So it's very appropriate that this sign is over by Coswell Field, and it really means a lot to the Hinsky family, so thank you very much.
Just get a picture with these guys. Just hold it, you can hang on to the pole.
It's heavy.
Here, I can hang on to this for you, too.
My father, George, went to spring training with the Giants when they were in New York in 1948. So he's the one that started all this stuff. And, good man. There you go. Thanks so much.
Congratulations.
I appreciate it.
I never went to a baseball game until I met him.
And now she's here. Thank you.
Hey, you guys did a great job. Oh, yeah. Thanks a lot. Thank you.
So it's good to start the meeting with something fun, and we'll hopefully get those up by Christmas, so you can see them out on the field as well. We have, I believe, Mike Sippen here to do a presentation on the NINA Manassas Fire Rescue Strategic Plan Presentation this evening as well.
All right, thank you very much for this opportunity.
We're gonna need you to either use the mic or be seated, whichever way is more comfortable for you.
I'll just do this.
You can carry it with you if you want.
All right, thank you very much for this opportunity. We wanted to take this moment to explain some achievements, accomplishments, that NINA Manassas Fire Rescue has done over the course of the last two years. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Mike Sippen. I'm an Assistant Chief of Charge of Training with NINA Manassas Fire. I've been here with the city since 2007, and spent 17 years with the Appleton Fire Department leading up to that. In 2014, we had a unique opportunity to start a new process, at least new to us. It's strategic planning, and it's a very in-depth, complex process that gives us an opportunity to really look at the future in terms of where we want to go as an organization. Okay. The goal of this, as I mentioned, was to create a comprehensive strategic plan that'll take the department well into the future. We had a very good group of employees, team members, that participated in this. We had virtually every rank within the department that participated, from Chief Klon at the time, he was a shift commander, we had assistant chiefs, with Vern Green and myself, Victor Voss, after his promotion to deputy chief, joined the team, we have Captain Jim Dunbar, driver engineer Amos Mickelson, driver engineer Jamie Leonard, who was also serving as the president of Local 275, Tara Tyson, our office manager, and a number of firefighters, Joe Muthig, Garrett G., and Jason Phillips. We were able to get through three very important steps, and that was the recreation of our mission statement, establishing core values, and also a vision statement. At that point in time, we brought in Catherine Nicewonder, who's with the University of Wisconsin Extension Office here in Winnebago County, and she was very instrumental in facilitating the process that led us to the ultimate end result. So we talk about strategic planning. Ask yourselves, what is it? Here's a good quote from Iowa State University. "Many organizations spend most of their time reacting to unexpected changes instead of anticipating and preparing for them. This is called crisis management. Organizations caught off guard may spend a great deal of time and energy playing catch-up. They use their energy coping with immediate problems with little energy left over to anticipate and prepare for the next challenges that they will face. This vicious cycle locks many organizations into a reactive posture." We found, and as the quote says here, it doesn't have to be that way, there's a good and sensible alternative, and it's been a tested process called strategic planning, which will give us a very viable alternative to managing the crisis that we're going to face. The process started back in 2014. Chief Klon and I put together some basic leadership training for the department. And during the course of that training, there were a lot of questions asked pertaining to, what are the plans and goals, the future plans and goals of the department? We didn't have any good answers, because we had never sat down as an organization and really examined that. So discussion started on a proposal to introduce the strategic planning process into the department. So what specifically is strategic planning, then? It forces an organization to look to the future, and it gives us an opportunity to influence our future, assuming that we take a proactive posture. Proactive, I mean, or what I mean by proactive is, we're trying to stay ahead of the game. Too many times, organizations, and the fire service in particular, being a very traditional-based organization, are reactive. Something happens, we respond to it. As we teach an incident command training, people who are going to be running emergency scenes, you don't want to be in that reactive mode. You want to be able to anticipate what's coming, so therefore, you can develop a better plan that's going to get you through the incident and really help to reduce the overall effects, negative effects of it. It's going to give us a better awareness of our needs related to issues and our environment, and we accomplish that through surveys. We'll talk about that in a little bit. It helps to define the overall mission of the department and focuses on what the objectives were, or are going to be, excuse me. It provides a sense of direction, continuity, and effective leadership, not just to the management staff, but to everybody within the organization. And it puts everybody in the department into the system and provides standards of accountability for everybody involved, the programs that are developed from it, and also any resources assigned to the process. The goals were identified through strategies, objectives, responsibilities, and timelines, and the ultimate goals, again, were taken from the information we received from a number of different people and other organizations. There's a lot of benefits that go along with having a strategic plan. One is increased efficiency and effectiveness. It helps us to better understand, and it gives us a better ability to learn what we can do to better the future. It makes our decision-making process that much better. It enhances our organizational capabilities. It really improves communications and relations, and we've seen some of that already. And also, it helps with increased political support, because we're coming to you being more transparent, helping you to understand where we're going as an organization, and at the same time, wanting you to be a part of that. As I mentioned earlier, the process began in May of 2014. We had a few challenges we had to face in terms of bringing everybody together. In many cases, there was off-duty time, so we had to limit it to about a monthly meeting. We met for two hours, and at the end of two hours, that was it. We selected, researched, and selected a book, and the name of the book was Creating Your Strategic Plan: A Workbook for Public and Nonprofit Organizations. There's a number of different guides out there, but this was a great book, because it took us step by step, from beginning to the end. The only thing we did different in this process is we started by redefining our mission statement, defining our core values, and also developing a vision statement for the future. That way, we had a good foundation on which to work from that led us into the development of the plan. So some of the accomplishments were, as I just mentioned, three of the things. We had a mission statement, one department fully involved. There's two basic questions that we asked ourselves of a mission statement that we'll get to in a little bit. The first draft of the plan was completed in June of this year, and it covers the years 2016 through 2020. It doesn't mean that in 2020, this plan is done. Each year, we'll get back together a couple times throughout the course of the year. We'll meet to review our progress, see if we have to make changes in the current plan. Then we will also look at adding that new fifth year. So in 2017, we'll get together, do the same things, and then look at the goals that we need to identify for the year 2021, and assign strategies to those, so we can work towards that. This is a rolling process, a fluid process, that realistically will never end. So the first thing we did, we reviewed our mission statement. And a mission statement describes the purpose for the organization's existence and indicates what the department does. As I mentioned before, two basic questions it answers. What are we here to do, and why? We have 68 members within NINA Manassas Fire Rescue. If we ask every one of the 68 people to answer those two, or apply those two questions to our previous mission statement of one department fully involved, we probably would've had 68 different interpretations. So with that, we felt it didn't really define who we are. So with the 10 people on the strategic planning team, the first assignment was each of us to write what we believe would be a good mission statement. And we spent a couple weeks working on this. We took basically bits and components of everybody's and put it into one comprehensive plan. Our new mission statement now is, "NINA Manassas Fire Rescue consists of committed professionals whose mission is to provide the highest standard of service through prevention, education, fire suppression, emergency medical response, technical rescue, and community interaction to preserve the quality of life and property for all those within the cities of NINA and The next part was core values. And looking at organizational models of strategic plans, there's always these three things: the mission statement, the core values, and a future statement, or a vision statement. The core values define what we want our organization to believe and how we want ourselves to be resonating within the community. It's also called the guiding principles, and define who we are, what we believe, and how we want to move forward. Through the training that Chief Klon and I delivered back in early 2014, one of the biggest issues that came up was trust. So we felt trust was the foundation of our core values. It's the cornerstone of all relationships. We will continue to strive to build and earn trust, both within the department and the communities we serve. We will earn trust through integrity, being committed to the highest standard of moral and ethical conduct, dedication, providing quality service through pride and professionalism, compassion, supporting our neighbors in their time of need, teamwork, working together to achieve the common goals, tradition, preserving and carrying forward the legacy of those who honorably served before us, and courage, doing what is right in the face of adversity. Lastly, we created a vision statement. And this vision describes, in brief, what we will look like as we successfully implement the strategies and achieve the full potentials of the plan. Basic questions that it answers. Where and what do we want to be? We're essentially taking that mission statement, twisting it a little bit, five to 10 years down the road. And our vision statement, then, is, "Our vision at NINA Manassas Fire Rescue is to have a positive, motivated, and educated department. We strive to meet the community demands. We will accomplish this with an organized and defined structure. We encourage change, use resources to the full extent, and work closely with outside agencies." So, three statements we put together, which took us probably over the course of a good six months, if not longer, to work towards. A lot of frustration, because it was a lot of brainstorming activities. But in the end, we truly believe as a team, we have a very good foundation on which we built the remainder of this plan. At this point in time, we went ahead, then, and brought in Catherine Nicewonder. She's a facilitator with the UW Extension Office here in Winnebago County, based out of Oshkosh. Phenomenal, excuse me, a phenomenal resource. And one of the best things about her, she's a train-to-trainer for the state system with the same book that we use. So she's intimately familiar with the process that we selected to develop our plan with. So we developed surveys to help us come up with, or to identify the goals. We used the SWAC process. That's an acronym for strengths and weaknesses within the department, which is an internal survey, and then opportunities and challenges, which were surveys sent out to our external stakeholders. Those stakeholders consisted of individuals such as yourself, from both city councils, department heads from both cities, community leaders, business leaders, other organizations, private organizations such as Gold Cross Ambulance, Theta Clark Hospital, and the general public. And we received a lot of good information, which helped us to develop this plan. As I mentioned earlier, the plan is to continue to meet on a periodic basis throughout the course of each year, review, implement, and modify the plan as needed, and each year, we will add a new fifth year. So this will be a plan that will continue to roll forward into the future. As a result of the surveys sent out, the internal and external stakeholder surveys, we identified four strategic issues. The first was external communications and public outreach, relationships with businesses, sustainable, responsible, and realistic budgeting, and planning and training for a changing future. Now, I'm not going to go into each of these in any detail tonight. I understand you have agenda and places you want to be later. So if you do have any questions specifically to the plan, please, don't be afraid to get ahold of Chief Klon, Assistant Chief Green, or myself, or anybody at the department. We'd love to be able to sit down with you and explain in more detail what the plan entails. There were then goals and strategies developed to address each of the strategic issues, the four primary issues. Each strategy was assigned a responsible party or parties, a deadline date, and also, if there was budgeting that was required. The future, as we look, again, at adding the fifth year for 2021, or even any other years in between, there could be budget requests that come in. We understand the budget process, so they may or may not be included. That's just the way it goes. We'll have less frequent meetings, but we'll have maintenance meetings to review, reevaluate, and implement new parts of the plan. And we will continue this into the future, so we can take NINA Manassas Fire Rescue and keep us in that proactive mode as we move into the future. So with that, are there any questions that Chief Klon, Assistant Chief Green, or myself
Looks like everyone read the plan and is good with your presentation. So thanks for coming tonight, Mike. We appreciate it.
Thanks for having me. Thank you very much.
Cancel. Okay. His Pat stuff is on the bottom, actually. Okay. So item three is an update from Pat Skolacki, I believe. Did I get it fairly close?
No "S" at the end, just a "C."
Okay. From Grave, he's going to talk a little bit about the project design for the Loop de Lake Bridge, and he's got some graphics for us as well.
Yeah, I'm gonna do it from sitting, so I can manipulate. I've got some imagery that I'd like to show and talk about some of the progress that's been made as we move further and further into the design with the anticipation of bidding it early in 2017. So I want to be able to manipulate through. So I've got some imagery here, and I know that the council has a packet that has these images in it, as well as an outline of what I want to talk about. But I'm just gonna follow along with my talking points, and then we can open up for questions at the end, or even as we go through it, we'll just keep it as an open format. So, as the mayor has introduced, me, Pat Skolacki with Grave, I'm the project manager for the Loop de Lake project, basically for both bridges. Obviously, here today to talk about yours, crossing the Manassas Channel downtown here, near the Trestle Trail project. We've been working on this project for, really, about two years now, starting with feasibility study in 2014, and then into 2015, and earlier this year, completed a due diligence effort, which really entailed a lot of field investigations that we did to verify some of the initial feasibility study items that we identified, environmental question marks, geotechnical, property ownership, things like that. And really, what we've done, as of early this fall, late summer, got into a detailed design phase, which is really when we start crunching the numbers, start developing plans and specifications, deal with the detailed permitting that the DNR and the Corps is going to require, and move forward with a project such as this in the anticipation of bidding it and building it in 2017. So really, what we're going to talk about today is, we've been working, obviously, with future Nina, with Amy Barker over there, to work through some renderings, and with Brian, and some of the comments that we also got from Mike, Katie, and Nina. But we've developed renderings that I'm going to talk about and kind of show you the imagery that we've developed, really incorporating a lot of the components that the design is ultimately going to have. Now, there's some features of the bridge that you're going to see here today that are pretty well solid. In other words, that's what it's generally going to look like. But there's a few little things, notably the gateway arch that you see there, that is still undefined right now. And that's one of the things that we'll be developing as we go further into the design. Most of the bridge look, the appearance of the lighting, the structure, the railings, those kind of things have been identified, and we'll be working forward with an image that ultimately, your finished product should look something similar to this. But as we go through this, let me just talk a little bit about what we're looking at here. Right now, we're sitting on that vacant parcel just off of Mathewson Street, on the south side of the crossing. So this is at the northeast corner of Fox and Mathewson, and you can see, and I'll show you a little bit later in a 2D, kind of black-and-white engineered drawing, so you can see that from an aerial view. But what we're looking at is looking north-east, I guess, looking at the structure itself across the channel. Again, you can kind of see in the lower-left corner, there's some parking that will be incorporated into the project, about seven stalls, and I'll show you that in a 2D image here shortly. You can see the trail coming into the bridge, approximately 12 feet wide is what that trail is, and that's a typical two-way multimodal trail width. That is the normal width that we prefer to see, so that pedestrians and bicycles can pass in two directions. We have lighting shown, not only on the ground where the trail approaches, but also on the bridge. You can see a similar type of, kind of antique-looking, something that we're trying to mimic.
You can see a similar type of kind of antique-looking, something that we're trying to mimic, what's similar on the Tressle Trail right now, to try to keep some consistency. Black finish to that lighting. You can see the gateway arch here, which is a donor opportunity that I'll talk about here shortly, as we get into the fundraising part of my presentation. And then obviously, the bridge itself, 14 feet wide, a composite deck, looking at timber railings with, timber with posts with cable. So if you've seen the Herb and Dolly Bridge, I think it's the same thing that's on the Tressle Trail, very similar to that style, to be consistency that we're looking for. And then you can see obviously the piers that we have spanning from one end of the bridge to the other. The piers are going to be about 60 feet apart with driven pile, concrete cast and plate, or they're concrete steel piles, driven into the ground from a barge and down to bearing, and then a concrete pier cap with steel girders and continuing that same composite deck and railing going across the bridge. So this is really that one image, and this is really kind of the grand image we're trying to convey from this more entry space with parking and benches and picnic tables as you go across to the northeast and go towards the Tressle Trail. Going to the next image, this is the same bridge. Now we're on the, I guess, west side of the bridge, about midspan. And we're looking again to the, I guess, northeast still. You can see some of the homes that exist there right now, and then where the landing is up in that northeast corner is that city-owned parcel adjacent to the railroad right-of-way that's crossed there for that railroad spur. What you're seeing here in the middle, again, you can see our concrete piers, and you can see our piling, pipe piling that will be used for support. But what you're seeing here is a bump out, a fishing bump out, an overlook, generally midspan on the downstream side of the bridge, so fishermen can use it. People can usually can see a bench there in the middle, someone that can use it for observation. We know that Jones Island's there, so there's wildlife and a lot of birds that come through there. So it's a really good opportunity for not only fishing, but also for wildlife viewing from that point. And what we're looking here, as I mentioned with the gateway, is another opportunity for a fundraising donor, part of the structure itself. So intent is to have one of these roughly midspan. Will there be more than one? We don't know. Right now, we know one is the goal, and that's the intent of what Amy Barker is pursuing with some of the private entities for fundraising. But if there does need to be a reason for a second, that's always on the table at this point. Looking here, this is a view, almost the same spot, but now you're standing on the bridge. So this is what it's going to look like if you're walking down. And you can see the width that we're talking about, 14 feet wide, really something that we did so that we can't tell people where to fish. We don't know where the fish are going to be. The trail on the ground is 12 feet. We went 13 on the bridge, because we wanted to provide that additional shy distance on the outside. So if someone was hanging on the rail fishing, we would not be impacting that normal 12-foot travel within the bridge itself. So we have an opportunity here to allow fishermen along the bridge railing the entire length in addition to the bump out, and still have our 12-foot travel width going two-way directions. So that's the intent. And really, what you're going to see, and you can see it's open, other than the light poles, everything is going to be at that 42-inch railing height. So it's very open feel, and you can see really everywhere you want, little kids to adults. And that's really what we're going for, something intrusive and highly visible. Next image, now you're on the north shore. So this is basically, if you looked at some of the other renderings, I'm just going to swing. Okay, there, you see that rock wall? It's a retaining, kind of a seawall. That's basically what you're seeing in this picture by your feet. So we're on the east side of the bridge, looking southwest. You can see on the far end, the little kink in the bridge. And the reason for the kink is because of the interceptors and the siphons that run through there. There's two sand here, there's an outfall with a header. If you ever look in an aerial on Google Maps, you'll see the three plumes of clean water coming out. But there's also an interceptor that crosses to the treatment plant. So both of those things made us push the bridge to the side of the pipe system. So basically, where we're standing is about where the pipes are, and we're spanning it only down at the end. And we're going to have a little longer span on the end to span those pipes. And then we're getting off of the side of them and running roughly parallel to them, which is why that kink is in the bridge itself. So you can see the piles and the piers. You can see the railings, very similar view from a different direction. And then again, this is standing on the north end, looking southwest, seeing the 14-foot width. You can see the seawall to the left. And again, it's a fairly long bridge, approximately 760 feet from landing to landing. And as I said, about 60-foot spacing, so I think we have 13 spans roughly. So then last, before I get into a couple of the other status updates, just wanted to show a few things on the approaches. And this is my, like I said, boring 2D engineered drawings that you're going to see if you look at the plan set as we move forward. But basically, what you're looking at here is, this is the south landing at Matheson Street, and this is the north landing with our connection up to the Tressle Trail. So this was all surveyed, real world. You can see here the pipes I was talking about. This is the outfall header that comes from the treatment plant and discharges middle of the channel. And this is the interceptor that runs to the treatment plant. So you can see the purpose for this kink, you know, we knew we had just this parcel and this right-of-way to work with. Well, there's pipes right there. So we knew we had to get across them as quick as we can. Likely going to have one pier in the middle, possibly none. We're looking at that. And then once we get past the pipe and have our clear zone, we turn and run parallel to cross to the north side. So that's why that kink is in there. And looking at the landing and the other areas, what we're doing here, there's currently obviously a roadway that ends, and this is public right-of-way. And what we're looking at doing is basically reconstructing that area and providing seven parking spaces. There's an opportunity here for kind of a bench overlook area that's off the trail. Otherwise, the trail will meander through that parcel, and then we'll have a paved connection to the roadway and ultimately to the bike route out in the roadway area. Some minor landscape will be incorporated into that, and that'll be developed further as we get into the design itself. Looking at the north end, as you all know, there's a railroad spur up there that's still in use, even though it is a fairly low use. I think about five to seven trains per day cross this area, so very slow obviously, because it's just a switching spur. But basically, what we did here, and what you see here is what they call a switchback crossing for pedestrian use. And this is something that Canadian National Railroad requires for pedestrian crossings. If you look down by Plexus in Nina, there's one similar to that location, where their parking lot crosses to Plexus's office downtown. So very similar situation here. In fact, it's essentially identical. And we'll be doing something very nearly the same, minus the ramps that they have over there. But basically, what they require is a little switchback that forces people to get on ground, turn and look this direction. And you can see that's a much shorter direction, look, before they have to turn and look the other direction. So it forces people to look both directions. The reason why this is longer, and it's longer on this side, is because this is where most of the train traffic is coming. The reason this is shorter, there's just a spur. If the train's sitting here, you don't really need to look, because it's already sitting there. But they wanted us to have this longer length, and this is pretty typical, to look where the direction of the traffic, the train traffic would come from before the crossing would happen. A paved crossing with fencing. And ultimately, we'll be ramping up and connecting to the Tressle Trail right here, which you can see the trail system here before it gets onto the boardwalk that runs parallel to the trail or the roadway on that side. Yes, sir?
As far as, you say there's fencing along the switchback there?
There will be.
Does it go all the way to the trail that goes over the water, the bridge?
We need to get it to the switchback, yeah.
So it goes to the switchback, and the fencing continues onto the bridge?
Well, but once we get on the bridge, we'll have the railing. So the only thing that the railroad is going to require is it along the switchback area.
I was just making sure, because I didn't want people wandering down over into River Street down by that area. Okay.
Yep, understand. Yeah, there will be, the fencing will, it's not going to tie exactly in, but it will essentially terminate where the railing for the bridge starts.
Okay, so they won't be able to get through?
Not on that side. Now, on the other side, typically, what we have to do is get past the switchback. So at this point, right here, we can terminate the fence. On this side, it just so happens that coincides with where the bridge starts.
Okay.
But on this side, we don't have to fence this by their requirements. We just have to get where the switchback starts, have to fence this whole piece in here. It really comes down to that 25-foot separation. The railroad has a requirement that you need to maintain a separation of 25 feet off center line of track. And that's really where this, you can kind of see this line right here, that's their right-of-way. You can see another one on the other side. So that's really where that 25 feet is. But we need to have a fence aligning that whole portion where the zigzag is, to force people to look. Because if we don't have a fence there, they could just cut right across from here to here and not force the people to look down the track approaches. And that's why we need to fence it. So makes people go that route. Yep.
And then I have one more question on the decking. So the new decking, is it comparable to the old Tressle Trail section, that composite decking with the screws in it?
There is composite decking on all the bridges that Herb and Dolly has it, Tressle Trail has it, yep. It's all composite decking. Different manufacturers are out there, but they're all the same product.
So this will be using, I don't know, what's the kind of decking that's on the Gilbert Trail?
That is Duralife Siesta, it's called. As far as the anchors, okay. There's different types of anchor systems you can do. We've done, they call them biscuit wedges, basically, that they go on the side of the planks itself, so you don't see them from the top. They're a little more, there's a trade-off with those, because those are a lot more difficult to replace. So a board breaks, for whatever reason, or gets damaged, you've got to take out pretty much every board leading up to it, because they kind of stagger as you put them in. Where if you screw them, you can pull out one board and put it back in. If you do the other ones, the biscuit wedges, a lot of times you have to take out, you might have to take out 20 boards to get to the one board, depending on where it is. So there's a trade-off in maintenance and appearance.
What's the plan for this one, for this new extension?
That's something that Brian and I need to discuss. We haven't gotten to that level of detail. We know it's going to be composite, because that's, you know, for the capital cost and the limited amount of maintenance that that requires long-term and the durability of those, it just, it's something that we would recommend, and that's the path we're going forward. Exactly how it's anchored, I agree, that's something we can discuss. Brian's making a note of it now, so it's something that we...
Go to Park Board, I think, or something like that. Yeah, thank you.
Yep, definitely take that into consideration. Okay, just, those are really the only images I really wanted to talk about. I'm just going to cycle back to the first one, and then I'll just want to update on a couple other topics. As I mentioned, the permitting is underway. There's an individual bridge permit that was submitted to the DNR before Thanksgiving. It's an individual permit. That timeframe can be upwards of three to four months, because there is a public comment period that's required, because it is an individual permit. There's a general permit, which ours does not qualify for, that's shorter duration. But this one will take a little bit of longer time, but it is the process, and it's something that we've done on a number of waterway-type projects like this. So that is currently under review by DNR. We should get some information back from them before Christmas regarding a complete permit status, and then we can start that comment period hopefully by the end of the year, if not very shortly after the first of the year. For schedule, we are about 50% through the design right now. We are moving forward with that, as I stated, on a daily basis. We are anticipating to finish the design around the end of January to the early part of February with, I guess your handout should say ad dates, those aren't bid dates. But we're looking at advertising for this project for the first half of February. And we need to advertise this twice as a public bid project, anticipating opening the project somewhere around the end of February. And then ultimately, as it works through this body, as well as Brian's office, awarding that contract sometime in March. And what we want to do is get that on the street as quick as possible, because there is, we're looking at a steel girder bridge, based on the budgets and the feasibility study that was done. And we need to get a steel order in as quick as we can, so that we can get that in the pipeline and deliver it on the site, once we get the piers out under the piling and the piers out of the ground and out of the water. Construction's starting May 15th. Most of the early work in that early timeframe until early to mid-June is going to be on grade, because of some DNR requirements that will almost surely come along with the permit, because of fish spawning. They typically do not allow in-water work until June 15. So the first month will be on-grade stuff, and then later on, we'll be getting in the water immediately after that. With the construction completion date of on or about middle of September, somewhere in that time as we work forward. Just to touch on budget and dollars, because I know that's of vital importance. As I mentioned, Amy Barker with Future Nina has been leading up the fundraising charge and has made a lot of good progress. And she is on track to reach those fundraising goals. I don't have those exact numbers in front of me, but I know when I talked with her last couple weeks ago, that she was on goal. So I encourage you, if you have any questions, to talk to Amy. There have been several donor opportunities identified, as I mentioned, with the bumpouts and benches and the archways. And there is some significant interest in those. So a lot of good progress to allow some people to have some ownership of this within the community and the business community to come forward and be part of this project. And then as budget, obviously, when you start budgeting a project, doing a feasibility study, you're starting big. And as the design gets more clear, and it gets smaller and tighter and tighter, so we know, you know, where we're at, and that's why contingency is a little larger at the start. But as we've been developing it, and we continually go through, after the feasibility study and the due diligence phase, we're able to tie down the budget even further, that's really the number that was put forward for the amount of dollars for this product that's been advertised through the Loopdale Lake Project Initiative. And we still are on track to be within that basically $1.6 million budget for each structure. Both of them are very similar, same features, roughly the same length, within about 40 or 50 feet. And that budget is still the track that we're path around right now, at this point in design. So we'll continue to find that number, and as Brian, I'll communicate that to Brian. He will obviously bring that to your attention as numbers get more and more refined and prior to bid. We obviously want to have something that's pretty tight, and that we've got good input from contractors, so that we can put this on the street. We have a good idea of what numbers are coming back. Obviously, not totally in our control, but we should have a good idea of where we're going to be. So that's my 15 minutes of fame. So any more questions? I'm here at your disposal for whatever you need, and I'll tell you what I can, obviously knowing that there's a lot of design, so there's some things still out there working, as Alderman Taylor mentioned, that topic, but there are others like that. So I'll tell you what I can. Some things are still in development.
Alderman Taylor, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the Tressle, the lighting is outstanding. The spacing on the lighting, it's seamless. It's just, there's no shadows, no dark spots. And for the pedestrian, that's great. For our police department, that's great. So I hope we can accomplish that standard on this bridge, too.
Yeah, our electrical engineers are, will be doing the lighting design. I know that is one of the donor opportunities that are being pursued. But, you know, photometrics are governed by the IES standards, and that's where the foot candle levels are always defined for pedestrian use, and that will be used as the guideline for this project.
And again, that seamless lighting is what I think our goal should be.
Yes, absolutely.
Also, on this slide here, to the left is Matheson Street, and you had said there were seven parking stalls there.
Yeah, I could scroll down to this one. You could kind of, I can zoom them in here, but...
And there is a residence to the west of that property. Is there any buffer, that people backing out of these stalls? I know they have a lot of grandchildren at their property. Grandma's taking care of a lot of the kids, and there's all sorts of toys and things in there, you know, big wheels and stuff in their driveway. Anything to prevent people backing out into their property?
Well, that is their main access to their home, too, so it's not, it's going to be, as far as their garage is right there, I know. So we do have a separation. You can kind of see here that there is a right-of-way line here, which, and the edge of pavement is basically going to match exactly where it is now. So we're not going to be taking up any of the terrace on that side at all, from what they currently exhibit. This turn width, the pavement width here, as well as the stalls, has been modeled through AutoTurn. It's a software that we use, so that we know vehicles can make this 90-degree turn in and a 90-degree back out and exit. So from a functional and operational standpoint, vehicles should have no reason to leave this shaded area at all. People do what they do. We all know that we can't control people's actions entirely, but there is no physical reason for them to go off of the paved area within this...
And that driveway we're talking about is right there?
Yep. It's pretty wide. I think there's a second one here.
Somehow, I don't know if it's posts or something, but I think there should be something there to protect that residence. You know, people are in a hurry, they're all jockeying, they're walking, they're running late, got to pick up the kids or something. They back out and back into that guy's driveway and hit a kid on a big wheel or something. You know, it's just not a good situation having, backing up parking into somebody else's driveway. So I don't know, you could look at it, maybe some separation we can come up with there.
Yeah, I mean, there's opportunities. Obviously, the property owner has to weigh in on this, and they have to be comfortable with it, because, you know, there are, you know, what do you want to call it? You, they're bollards or flats that you can drive over that stay up and they move. But I, I don't, I mean, he's going to have to be comfortable with it as well. There's an opportunity to possibly narrow up his driveway a little bit because it is significantly wide. But again, is that going to impact him negatively? Um, so it's something I think we'll, we'll definitely look at. Um, it's going to warrant a lot of conversations, I think, with that property owner, make sure anything we would do doesn't hinder him more than help him. And that's a balance we need to get.
We just need to reduce that exposure. Thank you.
Totally understand. Thank you.
Anything, anything else, Alderman Taylor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Alderman Collier?
I see that Fisher, fishing's a good part of the bridge, but, uh, there's probably six or seven houses on the backside and on the other side. That might have boats. Can they be able to get their boats underneath that bridge?
Um, we are, we are required to provide the navigational clearance that DNR requires when we do this individual bridge permit. Um, we modeled the structure with the waterway using the flood insurance study, which is a hydraulic, uh, model that the FEMA uses for flood studies. It's also part of the DNR's database. Um, we need to maintain a five foot minimum vertical clearance under normal water surface elevations to low steel. So that's code required, um, and that's to the bottom of the girdle. So that's going to be, be there, the five foot minimum.
Okay, then the other question I have, and I'm not sure about this. That comes up behind where the River Street plan is, right? And then there's the James River plan on the other side. Is that where, is where this goes, is that, they got that bridge that's connected between the two plants? That doesn't, that bridge doesn't stop anybody from getting up there, right?
Um, that's well to the southwest of here. Um, in fact, once you get down to here, this is actually railroad property, I believe.
But if you go down there, there's that extension across the two plants, correct?
You're, you're talking on the water, correct?
Across in the water.
Yes.
Okay, if, if I'm talking, you know what I'm talking about.
Is it upstream?
So this is near the Washington Street Bridge, the bridge that's not a lift bridge?
That is condemned and eventually it's going to come down.
Okay.
How are you going to get to it if you got to get a barge to it? Or how are you going to, because it's going to be a big problem down the road.
There's also a railroad bridge between that and this bridge. So is this the same clearance as the railroad bridge then more or less?
Uh, we're actually slightly more. We use that as a, uh, minimum level that we would have, um, in addition to the five foot, we look at that structure as well.
It's a different problem. I'll bring it up with Don down the road.
Understand, but yeah, we did definitely look at the railroad bridge to make sure that we matched or exceeded that.
Alderman Taylor?
Did you say the pilings were going to be, uh, water or steel?
They're, they're going to be steel pipe piling that you fill concrete inside of them. Um, that's pretty typical.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Thanks for coming and giving us update tonight, Pat. Appreciate it.
I can't see it. Right there.
Okay, item four is the minutes in communications to receive. Do we have a motion? Alderman Better?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time I make a motion to receive input on file minutes A through D and communications E through G.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? We need Will to get the screen up. There you go. Just let it go. Okay, seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. RMG, the consented, is the consent agenda. There's only two items this evening. The minutes to approve from the common council meeting of November 21st, which is not what it says on the agenda, but it's a typo there. And the Board of Public Works recommendations from November 21st to approve the street use application for First Eve. We sure can. So do we have a motion to approve the common council minutes? Alderman Better?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time I make a motion to approve consent agenda, item number one.
It's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? How many times did you vote, Alderman Collier?
He only voted. Motion carried on roll call 6-0.
Item two is the street use application for First Eve, Saturday, December 31st from 9 till 12:30 AM. Do we have a motion to approve? Alderman Better?
Mr. Mayor, at this time I make a motion to approve consent agenda, item number two, the street use application for First Eve. Which is Saturday, December 31st, 2016, from 9 PM to 12:30 AM for the Community Forward, Inc. And that's with approval from the staff.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could, oh, Alderman Better?
Mr. Mayor, I see we didn't have approval from the city attorney at this time, or does that come after we approve?
The city attorney, since we have a fill-in city attorney, the, um, city attorney was waiting to approve this until the insurance was paid. The insurance has been paid and that was all that we were waiting for. So she is in favor of, she's approving the application at this point.
Okay, I seen that was all here, but I just, she didn't have approval, so I was just concerned.
It came in after the packet was printed.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? Yes.
Well, she carried on roll call 5-0 with Alderman Taylor abstaining.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for November 23rd through December 1st. Do we have a motion? Alderman Better?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time I make a motion to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of 11/23/2016 through 12/1/2016 in the amount of $1,114,069.63.
There's a motion and a second. Chief Cullen, would you mind going and telling Alderman Taylor he could come back in? Didn't know if you could hear us out there or not. So we have a motion and a second. Motion and a second on the, um, accounts payable and payroll. Are, is there any discussion on that item? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, she carried on roll call 6-0.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for 2015 through 17. Do we have a motion? Alderman Better?
Mr. Mayor, at this time I make a motion to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2015 through 2017 license period. As addressed in our, in the memo.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, she carried on roll call 6-0.
Item three is a Class B liquor license application for bench warmers doing business as the Redliner, 977 Plank Road. Do we have a motion? Alderman Better?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to approve the Class B liquor license application for bench warmers, Inc. Doing business as Redliner at 977 Plank Road in Manassas. Tens Astro is the agent for the 2016 through 2017 licensing here.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all, could we have a roll call vote, please? Sorry.
Well, she carried on roll call 6-0.
Item four is an outdoor serve application for bench warmers. Do we have a motion? Alderman Better?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion for the outdoor serve application for bench warmers doing business as Redliner, Plank Road again for the, um, 2016 through 2017 licensing here.
So motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, she carried on roll call 6-0.
Item five is pertaining to the municipality's share of the room tax in the Fox Cities Tourism Zone. Do we have a motion to approve the letter? Alderman Better?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the municipality's share of the room tax letter in the Fox Cities Tourism Zone.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, she carried on roll call 6-0.
Getting close to the next item here. There it is. Okay. I, item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first is Resolution 52-16 to capitalize the Manassas Housing Program Fund. Is there a motion? Arnie, did you want to make that motion? Okay. Hold on, Arnie, you need to turn your light on too.
I was reading this one over here too, that's okay. Resolution 52-16 to capitalize the Manassas Housing Program Fund by extending the life of tax increment District 3 by one year.
Is there a second? So motion and a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Collier?
We passed this. I think it's good for the city and good for the inner city and everybody in Manassas.
Any other discussion? Alderman Better?
Mr. Mayor, um, Peggy, could you just share the implications, those sort of ramifications, please?
Sure. So this is a request to extend the district. The district's life actually statutorily ends today. So if no action is taken tonight, the district will end and there would be no extension. If there was an extension, which is allowed by state law, it was a 2012-ish, um, change in the law that allowed, um, TIF districts to be held open for one extra year to improve the housing stock and to, um, benefit affordable housing. Um, if the council approves this, it is a sole council approval. It's not a joint review board approval. So basically instead of 35 cents on the dollar for the, which would be the city share, we would get a dollar for the 35 cents that we'd be foregoing for those two purposes. And it would be a one-time thing, cannot be extended after that.
Okay, so then next year we close out this TIF though, right?
Right.
And then probably going to look to David to see what happens with this program at that point. Thank you, Peggy.
Well, thank you. Um, yeah, in the 2017 budget, uh, council allocated $22,500. Um, we estimate about $28,000 could be generated. Actually, it's a little bit better than an estimate, $28,000. Some change would be, uh, the increment value that could come out of the, the one-year extension of the TIF. Um, those funds would become available in 2018. So that would basically, uh, extend out the life of that program by another year. Add a little bit higher funding than we have in 2017. Funding sources beyond that, we're going to have to be, uh, continue to look at that, but, um, yeah. So I don't, I don't know if that answers your question, but that would be the.
Yeah, I think it does. The other thing I was looking at is that by improving these homes and of course, we know what, um, TIFs are for. And, um, is, is the value in this, you know, to bring it back as far as increasing property values and stuff to increase tax base as well?
Sure, yeah, definitely. This is when, it actually came into effect in 2009. Um, was one of the goals to, to allow the TIF to be extended by that one year. Um, was primarily because the impact of housing improvements on the values of the entire community. There's a strong correlation between the two. Um, I mean, since it was impacted, some of our closest neighbors, Oshkosh has done this several times. Um, Milwaukee's done it many times. Appleton has done it as well. Generally, the one-year increment is a lot more than $28,000, however. Example, I think La Crosse, the last program that they extended a TIF, I think it had $80,000 to $100,000 of value. And depending on the program that, that evolves, um, it'll depend on how much in quantity of projects you can do. Uh, you know, to give you an example, La Crosse has a fix it and painted program. I think it's, uh, $800 grant to paint your house. So they get a lot of grants out that way, uh, but what they're doing is primarily painting. Other communities will have a rental conversion program. Now that's between 50 and 100,000 to convert a multifamily to a single. So you'd get obviously a lot less bang for your buck with that project. Um, but it is felt that, uh, you know, the incremental improvement of housing stock, um, in a community has a direct correlation to values and, um, sort of non-monetary as well, sort of your aesthetics and, uh, community feel.
Okay, yeah, I'm going to kind of watch this. I kind of struggled with this and we voted for this because it seemed like we're taking money away from city infrastructure to fund some of this. And for me, there needs to be a substantial benefit from doing all this, so I appreciate your input. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
There's definitely a need, I know, uh, for this program in my district. How that program is going to be evolved, they talked to the mayor about this. Uh, it sounds like we all have input on it, on, um, I think Kevin Engelbert will be doing the.
Director Buck and, and Associate Planner Engelbert will be working on a program that will come back to the common council. And you'll have input on it at that point as well. And we've identified several programs in other communities that would be good candidates for this. Both like, as he said, in grant type scenarios or revolving loan type scenarios.
I know there's other programs out there for furnaces and different programs like that. And I don't think we should include that in our program. I think, uh, it should be very visual, uh, facades, uh, windows, paint, siding, things like that. Uh, the porches to help the, the neighborhood look better. I think it's all part of, uh, um, when you drive through the neighborhood, if it's looking good, it, it, it helps the whole values. That way we get more bang for our buck to spread it out just on facades and exterior, uh, type of thing. So I'd be in favor of that. Thank you.
Alderman Zalinski?
So with this money being from this TIF, does it have to implicate into this TIF district? Or can it be outside of that district? How is this money going to be?
Nope, it can be used outside of the district, can be used citywide.
So it's $23,000 citywide?
Yep.
That would be going to 28 or whatever?
28, awesome.
Okay. So we're still not sure if it'll be a grant revolving loan? So we have no idea how this money is going to be spent so far?
We've looked at programs, both grant programs at very low value and, uh, loan programs, revolving loan programs at a little bit higher value. Um, but those still have to be finalized and brought back to the, to the council for, you know, input and approval.
Okay, so it'll be, I guess it'll be you controlling the money and the way this is going to be spent eventually? Or is this going to be through our building inspector, as we mentioned before?
Well, it'll be through the community development department.
Through the community development?
So ultimately, uh, through myself, but there'll be input, I believe, from the, I'm, I'm hoping through the housing authority, uh, most likely to review applications.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
One other question. Uh, will you have like, uh, a list of, uh, contractors that are, that could do these projects? Or is this going to be a, a family trying to do it or something?
Depends on the scope of the program. I mean, there are certain contractors that you would have to use if they're lead certified. Um, if you're just painting your house, you know, and there's no lead present, you might not get the same scrutiny. For larger projects, you typically would keep a list of, of eligible contractors.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote? Oops, I'm sorry.
Uh, I guess, question for Peggy. So has this been, ever been extended before this TIF? Or anything ever taken out of it before?
This TIF, um, has not been extended. There are not very many, um, circumstances under which you can extend TIFs anymore. Those sunset last October, so this is a very, one of the very few ones I can. So this one has not been extended to this point. This would be a one-time, one-year extension.
Could you remind me again what TIF is District Number Three? Would that be?
It's the greater downtown area. It was mainly the, was the original Faith Technologies or Bonta headquarters on the corner of Resene and Main.
And that extends down to?
And I can't tell you exactly where the limits are, but that was the project that the TIF was created for. It was that office building.
I guess my, my comment on this would be, I, I'd love to give this money to this program, but I can't take it away from the taxpayers. I think the money should be going back to the taxpayers and this TIF money should be going on the tax roll. I want to improve our housing stock, but I don't think this is the way to do it. I think inspection, that's the way we get after this. We start finding, I don't know what, what's going on with our building inspector so far, but I don't know if we have to put this money towards hiring a building inspector because we've been waiting long enough and I just hate to take money away from TIFs. I think we should end it as it is. So thank you for bringing it forward, Mr. Collier, but can't see myself voting for it.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 5-1.
Item two is Resolution 53-16. Is there a motion? Alderman Zalinski?
Make the motion to approve R 53-16, requiring, uh, written notice to council regarding department budget overages of more than $1,000 introduced by myself.
regarding department budget overages of more than $1,000, introduced by myself.
Is there a second?
All second.
There's a motion, a second? Is there any discussion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm assuming this is for any given line item that's in their budget to exceed, or is it any particular part of the budget or the total budget or...
The way I understand it is any line item and if Alderman Zalinski has other comments.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of micromanaging our individual departments. They have a responsibility to do too, and not everything always works out perfect in the budget world. I'm not in favor of doing this. I think that gets it too finite for what our role is in oversight for our city staff. So, I appreciate, you know, Alderman Zalinski bringing it forward and wanting to do something like this, but I'm just not in favor of micromanaging staff unless there seems to be a problem. And then, that we got to take up with the mayor, I think. So, I won't be supporting this. Thank you.
Alderman Keenan?
Thank you. I'd just like to echo Alderman Benner's sentiments. We have a very qualified and competent staff and I don't think we need to be micromanaging. I understand and appreciate your wanting to know everything, but I'm very much contented with the quarterly reports.
Alderman Zalinski?
I guess where this started from is I went over these quarterly reports. Well, I heard about all, my dad's brought this up in the past and former council, that these quarterly, we bring these quarterly reports for it, but we don't know what's being spent where exactly. We could go, I guess you could go through, like, how the mayor mentioned in the memo, but we don't know exactly what the expenditures are over, like, the fire department does or I got from the Manassas Utilities budget where the financial report where it lists every item and it tells you if it went over or under the budget. I don't know. I guess this is a question for Peggy. Is this something that our departments could do? This is what I want, this $1,000, because I want it reported to us that where this money is eventually going and why isn't it brought forward unless it's a substantial amount.
So, it's not true that it's not brought forward because what happens at the end of the year? Well, let me back up a little bit. When you look at state statute and code, it says by purpose. By purpose, in my mind, doesn't mean by line item. It means by purpose or function, which is what our divisional budgets are made up of. So, if we have office supplies of 500 and maybe postage of 1,000 and one goes over and one goes under, I wouldn't see that as council purview. Of course, council overrides what I think. It doesn't matter, but that would be the flexibility that you'd be taking away. It wouldn't be by purpose. It would then be by line item. We pay payables once a week and you can see hundreds, you can see hundreds of transactions. We do payroll every other week, which goes to hundreds, if not thousands, of accounts. So, in order for us to accomplish this for you, we would have to have somebody every single week, every single time a payroll or a payables are on hit, go through all of these reports and tell you, unless, of course, you just wanted us to print you approximately a 300-page report and let you do that. So, I don't know how feasible in this community with the staff that we have that that kind of initiative would work. However, the quarterly financials that were just started this year do tell you exactly by purpose what goes over or under and how you could ask those questions or if you see that something's getting, you know, if something's 70% spent in the first quarter, there's obviously some questions to be asked and things like that. I would suggest that the council would first look at those financial reports along with the budget reports and all of the information we give you at those points and ask kind of the questions that you're looking for and see if you really do see a problem because I've been here almost three and a half years and I've yet to have somebody ask me if an account was overspent or not. So, knowing that nobody asks the question for you to put staff through that kind of work, I'm not, I'm not sure what you're expecting to get out of it, I guess, is where I'd be asking the question.
I'm just looking for a specific where this money's being spent because we'll have items that go over budget and we'll never hear about them and everything's just basically a slush.
Well, when purposes go, no, when purposes, it has to be spent on the purpose. That's a state law. That's not Manassas Council law. State law says you have to spend it on the purpose that you budget for it, which you see every line item at budget time. You also see a budget time, an estimate for the year-end that's coming up in advance of the next year. Another opportunity for you to look at that. If anything changed other than those purposes that were approved by council, they have to come back to council, which they do in approximately March of each year with all the purposes that were overspent. So, you'd get to see it in that process as well.
So, is that where it's telling us if projects aren't getting done or not?
How would a line item budget that told you how much was spent tell you if a project was getting done or not? How does this accomplish that?
I think because stuff, if stuff goes over budget, you got to get the money from somewhere else and where's that money coming from?
I thought I heard you just say, how do we tell if the project is done or not? Yes, that's true, but that's what the departments do is they manage that. For example, if I had to have two special financial audits this year, then I better go cut back on training or some other item in my budget so that I can make it work. But if I can't do that, it has to come back to this council at the end of the year and this council gets to review every single purpose that's gone over their budget.
So, through the quarterly reports, that's when we're seeing these ramifications of over expenditures, you're saying?
You would see, if you look at a quarterly report and it'll say, you know, the budget is whatever, it'll show you what the budget is, it'll show you the same time comparison last year. So, for example, in the nine-month financials that you saw most recently, you saw 2015 budget, 2015 nine-month spending, 2016 budget, 2016 nine-month spending and what's left or how much it's over. So, your indication that it could potentially be going over would be how spent is it at that point or is it already overspent at that point? And then, you could ask questions at that point. It's just not on a line item scale. It would be maybe 15. There's usually in a typical divisional budget, about 15-ish line items that would be combined into one divisional budget, but it's all separated by purpose. That's why I set the financials up the way I did.
So, the reasoning why I would take, so, I just don't get the reasoning behind why it would take so long to go over every single line item when it's being pushed forward, like you say, when we're, basically, you're showing our checks and balances.
I'd be, I mean, I or anybody else would be happy to run you the 300, 350-page report and you could look at that. Is that what you're looking for?
I'm looking to find out.
I mean, if you're looking for me to go through it, that would not be feasible for someone on staff to be able to have the time each week to go over every single, you know, keep in mind, we have hundreds of budgets, times that by 15 or 20 lines in some of them, and all of a sudden, you're talking about thousands of lines. So, if you wanted somebody to look at that every single time it changed and notify the council every time somebody, something went over a line item, I would then ask council for another position in finance because that's what we would need to make that work.
Would it be better if it was a higher amount? If it was, then it wouldn't be ramified?
It doesn't matter. You'd still have to go through the same process.
To check every single one?
Every single one. If this is a line item request, and that's what I see here, it says any line item expenditure, somebody would have to look at every line item. Now, I can print reports. I can't print reports that say, you know, which line item and, but we could probably pay our vendor to create some things like this. The problem is, is it would have to be run every single week and somebody would have to review it every single week. So, I'm just not sure if that, that level of detail along with that frequency would be realistic.
Is, well, the reasoning, bringing this forward is to find out what's of these line items are being, if it's going over or under. Is there a reason why that isn't reported in the quarter, like, based on line items because you don't want to go over every single one or is it because...
Well, instead of a three-page report that I haven't gotten one question on, I would give you a hundreds-of-pages report. Would that be beneficial?
Well, I just, it's, I don't know how to explain it, but through this, but...
I mean, in the budget, you have the budget, so you have the budget. You get that in October and you can see exactly what the budget amount was and what the year-to-date spending and what the estimate for the year-end is. If any are over at that time, that would be an excellent time to talk about it because there's still about three months left in the year, so departments could make some adjustments if that was necessary. Those reports could be run more frequently, maybe say quarterly, but someone's got to be willing to look at those 300-page reports. So, if the council was willing to do that, that would certainly be feasible. We can run that budget report anytime, but to run it every single week that a payable or a payroll is run, that wouldn't be feasible. At least, I don't think it would be, but again, if the council wanted to allocate that kind of staff, we could certainly do it.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, could you refresh my memory? I didn't check the video on it that was going to, and I didn't have time, but last year, this question came out of, I think, our budget hearing and it was from Alderman Dan Zalinski. And I know you and him were having some conversation about it up here and you thought it was a good idea that, and I don't know if this is exactly what Alderman Zalinski is saying here today, this resolution, or was something else? You recall that last year, we talked about...
I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to, but...
Trying to keep the council better abreast on what was happening or something. I know you and him had quite a conversation.
That's what Director Stino was talking about, the quarterly reports. So, as she was saying, if...
And that's what the conversation was last year with quarterly reports and things.
So, if you see the library budget in the first quarter has spent 50% of their budget, that would be your opportunity to say, why are you exceeding 25% of your budget when the year is only 25% done?
Okay.
And then, you could, we'd have that discussion.
I think there was something, there was some, a lot of overtime or something that was the issue in last year's budget, looking at the end of the 2015 budget. And I think that's what Alderman Zalinski was trying to balance out, that we could maybe get a handle on that earlier.
Well, that's...
Instead of everything kind of at the end.
And overtime tends to be a function of vacancies within departments.
I mean, I could go back and look at the table.
And if your overtime is over, typically, your straight time is under as well as your benefits because we're basically charging it within a different line. The other thing that he might have been talking about would have been, like, in public works and parks, we budget each person a certain percentage in each area. So, we'll budget a person 20% in snow plowing, 20% in sanitary sewer and 20% in road construction. But if we have a really snowy winter, they might work 30% in snow plowing and then those other departments' areas would be less because those vary then according to where they actually worked. So, it could have been something to that effect as well.
I know the conversation you and Dan Zalinski had, Alderman Dan Zalinski, you were both in agreement with, yeah, maybe we could do this better. I think that was your words and, you know, so, I don't know exactly what the focus was back then, but we could revisit that video and find out exactly.
I guess what is, what do you want to accomplish? And if you can help us figure out what you want to accomplish, and I think what you, from what I hear, what you want to accomplish is to have advance discussions when it appears that something is going to go over. And we're not talking about the paperclip budget. We're talking about something that's substantial. So, like I said, if we see that whatever department is substantially over based on the percentage of the year, that's when we would want to discuss those things.
I was just, I'm not the author of this, and I was just talking about what was happening last year and what the, something with the same situation here. So, that's all I'm, and we're all kind of in agreement with it. I thought, I thought your memory might be part of it mine.
Lots of numbers sometimes. I don't remember all those number conversations, but if there's something that we want to accomplish, we can look to see if there's a responsible, cost-effective way to accomplish some of those things. But as Director Stino said, we can provide you with reports if you do want those things and we'd be happy to show you what's in the budget. Alderman Zalinski was showing us the Manassas Utilities report. The Manassas Utilities report probably has, they probably have as many divisions for the whole Manassas Utilities as we do in maybe the police budget. So, I mean, we're talking a lot less divisions. Our budget is much more transparent than theirs. What they do is they do list specific projects and track those projects. Even tracking projects within the entire city, you would probably have 30-some pages, I bet, of projects that we're working on at any one point. It'd be pretty hard to track all those on a daily basis. And is, is that what we want to be doing or do we want to be looking at vision and priorities up here rather than micromanaging a specific project?
Alderman Zalinski?
Through this resolution, I wasn't trying to get through the micromanage. I'm trying to get to a point where we're understanding what projects are and aren't getting done, not projects per se, but what vehicles are being purchased, what over expenditures so we know that we can tell our constituents what projects are getting done in our area and what ones aren't going to get done. And I, I don't know any other way to, I talked to our attorney captain about this and she said, I wanted to make it so that it was in a different orientation to say that if a line item was for a project or any certain aspect of vehicle purchase, a, I guess, if staff wasn't hired and it was used for a different application, that it would be brought to notice to us so it just doesn't, just happen under the wing so we know what's getting done and what's being costed more to the citizens.
I think Director Stino talked about it has to be used for the purpose which was intended. So, I can't take money from the police department's budget for vehicles and use it to buy a snowplow. That wouldn't be the same purpose or something like that, but if, I don't know what to use, for example, but like she was talking about, if your, your mileage is a little over and you're, because you had to drive further than you thought to a conference, but the conference was slightly cheaper, it all adds up to the same amount.
I'm just wondering because some projects are getting done and some aren't.
What, I'm not sure which projects aren't getting done.
I've heard of street construction, that didn't happen because of a different, something else?
We've done all of our street projects in the past, as long as I've been here, I believe.
So, all our line items are getting basically fulfilled?
I wouldn't say all of our line items, but I would say our major projects are getting done. We've had problems, issues with hiring a couple people and it does take time to hire the right person. Hiring the wrong person is much more expensive than leaving that position open.
And where do those funds go that...
So, those funds would be returned to the general fund if they're residual at the end of the year. If, some of that might go to overtime. If we have, if we're down a police officer, we may be working overtime with other officers, so some of that might go to that. When we have retirements, there's typically sick leave payouts, vacation payouts, things like that, recruiting costs, that may offset the time that you don't have a person within that department. And we are discussing that today with the Director of Public Works. The payouts probably are going to cover pretty close to the unused salary for the year. There might be some residual, but it pretty much is going to be awash by the end of the year. So, we wouldn't be spending that on hiring a building inspector, let's say, because that wasn't the original purpose of that money. We can talk about this more afterwards and see if we can come up with a way that you can feel comfortable that you're knowing a little bit more of what's going on.
Okay. I think Spencer seconded, I'd like to rescind this to talk about this more. I don't know who's...
So, you want to table it or do you want to...
Yeah, table. Well, I don't, I guess the resolution, I wish I would have had you come forward to me and talk about this. I thought it was a kosher resolution, but all I get is a memo on Monday and I was gone all weekend, so I guess get rid of, take my, I take away my motion. What's the legality way of saying?
The appropriate way to handle it would be to move to table the resolution at this time. It can always be taken up off the table at a later point.
Can I remove the resolution?
If you move the table, if you move the table, that legally has the effect of removing the resolution consideration.
Okay, I move the table.
Okay. So, motion to table, and we need a second for that as well. Is there a second?
A second.
Is a motion a second to table? Any further discussion? Alex, did you have?
No.
James, did you have discussion?
How did that?
I must have bumped it as you were going to vote. Could we have a roll call vote then, please? Just to table it.
Motion carried on roll call 6-0.
And so, what this would do, Alderman Zalinski, is if no one asked to remove it from the table, in April, it would just die.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I wanted to comment, but when we had the motion to table, I was assuming that my discussion was just on the motion to table, but is it appropriate that if I just make a comment on that at this moment?
If there's no objections, any objections?
Yeah, the only thing I was thinking is when, when I saw this, I was having... The only thing I was thinking is, when, when I saw this, I was having a hard time identifying what it was all about, in listening to Alderman Zalinski. Seems like there's just some logic to just get department head reports at certain times of the year, just to give them the status of their department, whether it be quarterly or halfway through the year or something, just to determine, just give an overview of where they're at with things at that time, with projects, with whatever's going on in their department, just so everybody know what it is, and that just might resolve Alderman Zalinski's concerns, and then he can ask questions at that time.
And we had done that for a while, and it died for some reason, but we could definitely bring it back.
Probably staff lack of interest or something, but yeah, if we could just, maybe just try that again, it might just, might just help all that together.
We can definitely do that.
One other thing also is the CIP review. So you kept mentioning projects. So the goal here is to get the CIP review in the summer, so it's a planning document. That would be an excellent time to talk about all the projects that were in the CIP for that year, where they are at, where are they gonna happen, are they gonna be over, under, et cetera. That would be helpful for staff as well.
And that would just come from you, I would think, from the CIP review, I would think, right?
It'd probably be partially me and partially the department head that that would match.
Yeah. Because that's a great point, because that is a big part of what it is.
Sure. Okay. Item L is appointments. There are two items that could be taken up together. It is the resignation of Linda Stoll and the appointment of Kevin Engelbert to the, be the City of Manasseh representative to the Valley Transit Board. We have a motion. Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the resignation of Linda Stoll and to approve the appointment of Kevin Engelbert as the City of Manasseh representative to the Valley Transit Board for the period of 12-5, 2016, through 7-31, 2017, and also thank Linda Stoll for her service. She's a good representative of the city, I think. Thank you.
So motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item N is public comment. Any matter listed on the agenda? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment at this time? Seeing no one, being that Attorney Captain is unable to be here this evening, if there's no objection, we will add the closed session back to the next meeting. Attorney Godluskis can speak a little bit on it, but I don't know if he can speak exactly what Attorney Captain was going to. So I would accept either a motion to recess, if you want to do that, or just a motion to adjourn. Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?